Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada and we are, have the pleasure of having Deputy CEO David Tawalo leading us today.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, first order of business is to, first item on the agenda is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
Very good. This is the first time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to an item that is on today's Regional Transportation Commission agenda, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, spell your last name, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good morning, RTC Commissioners. My name is Chuck Neuvonner of Opportunity Village and the RTC Tech Committee, joined by our CEO Bob Brown in just a short while. Speaking on behalf and in support of Gen Item Number 41, the Community Mobility Program Grant Renewal, the CMP grant for Opportunity Village. We first say thank you to the years of support that the RTC has provided to Opportunity Village and providers like OV in creating specialized, customized, and very flexible transportation solutions to citizens with disabilities to bridge barriers and reach goals throughout Las Vegas. We also thank the Paratransit Team and Specialized Services, Senior Director Antoinette Braddock and her team for the support and creativity in accessing this grant. Most importantly, we want to share what this grant has accomplished. At Opportunity Village in just the last year, more than 650 adults with disabilities have been provided the specialized services, accessing more than 160 different locations to achieve goals in daily living and independence and employment, and this is 24,000 unique trips. What's most important is how these trips were accomplished and who was on those rides. These trips were accomplished through this grant by being able to be incredibly specialized in the types of vehicles, ADA accessible vans and everything down to on-demand lifts, where we were able to coach folks in accessing transportation independently for themselves. Along with these provider options has been the accommodation for various equipment and staff. We're talking direct support professionals in a one-to-one arrangement, even nurses. Where folks are going, it's that first job. It's a job coach who but for their mentorship would not allow someone to be successful and sustained in an employment opportunity that they've reached, being tax-paying citizens for the first time. It's allowed people who have not yet had jobs be able to connect with local providers, other nonprofits, and volunteer giving back in that first job experience that they grow in. And also, for those who but for the enrichment and the growth opportunities that they alone can measure the value of, it's someone in a motorized wheelchair who needs to travel with their nurse for the clinical services they receive round the clock and being able to engage in the City of Las Vegas adapted rec programs, the enriching experiences, and access to the greater community. So we're removing barriers that otherwise would isolate people with disabilities. We're grateful for the CMP grant and what it affords. OV matches greater than dollar-for-dollar for every grant that we received, including CMP. And I want to now turn it over to our CEO Bob Brown for a personalized message.
Thank you very much to the board. I just appreciate all the work that you've done. I just wanted to share that for over 14 years now, my daughter Sarah, who is medically fragile and works at Opportunity Village, has gotten an RTC ride to work every single day. And I tell you, that's, that's pretty impressive. For 14 years of work, I have very few complaints and very much gratitude for all the wonderful employees and all the, all the work and the service that they did. She's created relationships with these drivers. These drivers are wonderful people that have the best intentions, and I just commend you and the entire RTC for the work that they do to keep people safe and to keep them independent and mobile. So thank you very much for all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Cyrus Hojaty, C-Y-R-U-S-H-O-J-J-A-T-Y-89103. Just like to comment on the Southern Nevada Strong Plan. I've been looking at this for over a decade. I'm glad it addresses many of the issues. I just found out it addresses urban heat island effect, which is true. It's seven degrees cooler on the outskirts. My concern is that it doesn't go far enough. It doesn't do a whole lot as it should. Much of the status quo is still happening, particularly on outward growth, and if we keep doing this the way we've been doing it, I think we're going to be headed through very difficult and challenging times. So please look to stretch this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hojaty.
Hello and good morning. My name is Sherry Castro. Last name is spelled C-A-S-T-R-O. I am Director of Programs with Helping Hands of Vegas Valley, and I've been with the organization for almost three and a half, four years. I want to say thank you to the RTC Board for the continuous support going back to 2014 and grant funding through the RTC Community Mobility Program Grant. Because of the funding HHOVV receives this fiscal year, we've been able to provide 1,933 senior citizens over the age of 60 residing within the Las Vegas Valley, 10,682 safe and reliable rides to medical appointments, dental appointments, grocery shopping, and errands. HHOVV also provides transportation at three congregate meals, allowing for seniors to receive a nutritious lunch and socialization that many seniors too often go without, and group shopping, where we go to senior communities, pick up groups of seniors, take them twice a month to go to their local Walmart Supercenter and purchase groceries. This has all been provided by seven compassionate drivers using 88 compliant vehicles, three of which were generously donated by RTC, and three scheduling and dispatching HHOVV team associates, all whose main priority is to provide top-notch services to the clients we serve, allowing for them to live independently in their home. Again, thank you to all of you for your continuous support of Helping Hands of Vegas Valley. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cerise McAllister, and I'm with Helping Hands of Henderson. We service seniors that are 60 years of age or older that reside in Henderson. We really do focus on the clients that live in the RTC non-accessible areas. So far, we just wanted to thank you for the Community Mobility Grant. It has given us a lot of capability of providing transportation to clients that live in Inspirada that need to go to Heritage Senior Center on Boulder and Racetrack and to the Nevada Adult Daycare Program that's out on Wagon Wheel Way and they live way up on Raiders Way. This year, we've provided so far 14,000 one-way rides to 450 unduplicated clients. We take a lot of clients to dialysis, medical appointments, grocery shopping, and their personal errands. Even to get their hair done, for some of our clients, it's difficult for them to raise their arms and wash their hair on their own, so small things like that mean the world to them. We have also reduced our waitlist from one year to one to two months, so thank you again. We also have had vans donated to us in the past from you guys. With the last one, now we have taken ownership over it, so thanks again.
Thank you, and a great book you're reading.
Good morning. My name is Marissa Shoup from Nevada Hand, the Director of Resident Services. Today, I am here to extend a heartfelt thank you for Line Item Number 40, which is the Continuation Grant to continue to serve low-income seniors in a Nevada Hand community by providing transportation to grocery stores, pharmacies, and other really essential shopping. The Community Mobility Grant allows us to continue to provide more than a home at each one of the Nevada Hand communities, serving over 5,000 units and 8,000 residents every day. And so we can't thank you enough for our ability to continue to provide transportation services over and over. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period. I just wanted to note for the record that Mayor Hardy and Councilman Wanless are excused today, as is CEO MJ Maynard, who got invited to test before Congress and so is testifying on behalf of the American Public Transit Association before Congress today. It's pretty cool.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. The agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion. All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is to receive the CEO report. And I'm happy to report what the first one is, operator recognition. This is an exceptional employee from MV Transportation. His name Cameron McCall. To present this item, we have a video from our Senior Director of Paratransit and Specialized Services, Antoinette Braddock. Let's go ahead and hit play and see. Oh, sorry.
This month, we have the privilege of highlighting Cameron McCall, a dedicated driver trainer from MV Paratransit. Cameron has been a paratransit driver since 2021, and he has displayed great leadership and dedication. He consistently steps up to the plate to support RTC efforts when we're in short need of drivers and has recently volunteered to help with Formula One, Super Bowl, and Transit Worker Appreciation Day. Paratransit recently added new low-floor vehicles to our fleet, and Cameron took ownership for familiarizing himself with the new vehicles. He created a thorough training program and committed to an aggressive schedule to ensure all operators, road supervisors, and other staffs were thoroughly trained, so we could get the vehicles on the road efficiently serving our community that relies on paratransit. It is important that all drivers are trained, as we are expecting more vehicles to add to our fleet. Let's go surprise Cameron.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Where's my good friend Cameron?
How's it going, Mrs.?
Hi. Well, I think it's a little bit better. Can you hold this for me?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
On behalf of the RTC Board of Directors, our CEO MJ Maynard, we would like to present you with the RTC Crystal Bus.
Thank you so much.
To show our appreciation, our gratitude for all of the great things that you do. You know I appreciate you so very much, and honestly, I could kind of count through my fingers, and maybe I don't have enough, to, on all of the great accomplishments that you've done.
Thank you so much.
So the work that you do with the training and our new operators and F1, Super Bowl, and then also the huge project with the new low-floor buses, yeah, we can't thank you enough. We are so appreciative, and I am so personally proud of all of the hard work you've done.
Thank you so much.
So thank you, and again, on behalf, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I see Cyrus out there. If you want to stand up, we'll give you a round of applause.
Thank you guys so much. On behalf of Paratransit slash RTC, I'm very honored for having my team slash family. We work hard every single day, and I love what I do, have a compassion for our clients and getting them where they need to be in a safely manner. And I thank you so much, Ms. Antoinette, for everything. Thank you, Mr. Ali. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Sorry. Cameron, want to stand up and we'll give you a round of applause?
The next, next item we'd like to recognize is Christian Torres. He's a marksman security officer who has been nominated by some of our transit operators. To present this item, we have a video from Director of Safety and Security Operations, Tom Attaberry.
This month, we are honoring Marksman Security Officer Christian Torres. Officer Torres is a consistently exceptional security officer who stands out among his peers, be it in his energy level, constant professionalism, or his always pressed uniform. An area that Officer Torres truly shines in is deescalating situations. In fact, the TransDevDeuce operators nominated him for this award because of his consistent, cool temperament, and calm demeanor while working with operators and their passengers. Let's hear more from one of those operators now.
Hey, Chris, on behalf of all the strip drivers, we want to kindly thank you for all your hard and diligent work. Chris, you are so cool, calm, and collective. Chris, you are amazing.
Thanks, Ms. Ali, for recognizing Officer Torres's hard work. Now, on behalf of the RTC, we'd like to thank Officer Torres for keeping our passengers and community safe. Let's go surprise him with the Crystal Bus Award. Good morning. Are you Christian?
Yes, sir.
I'm Tom Attaberry. I'm the Director of Safety and Security for the RTC.
Yes, sir.
We want to present you with an award, the Crystal Bus Award, for all your outstanding work on behalf of the RTC and the RTC Board and on behalf of the executive staff of RTC. We want to present you with that. You've done an outstanding job at the Heart Attack Grill, and we want to recognize you for your hard work that you've done. So congratulations.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say thank you for the award. Thank you for the acknowledgement. I've tried my best to work very hard to live up to the standards that have been set, and I do my very best to actually just try to make sure everyone is having a good day. And I am really, really happy and thankful for this award, and thank you for the recognition you have given me. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is Christian here?
I, I think he was not available today. He's doing some training as part of the new security transition, so.
Great.
With that, the next item on the CEO report is to receive a presentation on our regional planning efforts. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Regional Planning Manager Deb Riordan to give the presentation.
Thanks so much, David. So as shared through previous presentations, the Metropolitan Planning Organization really leads regional transportation planning in a couple of ways. First, we really work to engage the community, to identify current needs. We take that information and also forecast, do travel forecasting to predict how people will travel into the future. Then we gather all of that information and choose and fund priority transportation projects using federal transportation dollars. In addition to this role, we also lead regional transportation planning. This includes the integration of transportation and land use to create a more sustainable community. So just a little history around how we got here and where we're going. As you may already know, federal law requires that communities of 50,000 people or more are required to include a metropolitan planning organization. And in 1981, the RTC was designated as the MPO for Clark County. As a result, the RTC became one of the, the only agency nationally to oversee public transit, traffic management, roadway design and construction, as well as housing, the MPO, all under one roof. So from the 80s, population growth in the region continued to steadily increase into the 90s and even into the 2000s, until the Great Recession hit in around 2008. Population growth really leveled off at this time, causing our regional economy to be hit even harder than other places. So as a result, in 2012, local agencies really came together to develop a plan for growth in order to really increase our economic resiliency. The City of Henderson really stepped up to lead this effort on behalf of the region, and the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan was developed. So after the plan was developed in 2015, as a regional convener, the MPO was identified to lead administration of this regional plan. So for nearly a decade in this role, we have worked to promote the plan vision, track implementation of the plan, as well as provide direct technical assistance. And in 2021, our role continues to evolve and expanded even further through the passage of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. This act provided additional planning funds and support for our work at the MPO to align transportation with economic development, housing, as well as climate change goals at a regional scale. This change allows us to use federal planning dollars in support of regional planning, staff time, as well as consultant services, including the upcoming 2025 Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan. So when developed, the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan engaged over 70,000 community members as well as leaders to discuss how we wanted to grow and the path to get there. The plan was really a transit-oriented development plan and envisioned investment in high-capacity transit supported by vibrant and walkable neighborhoods. This vision is really aimed at making the region fairer, smarter, and stronger for all. So this means a region with more affordable housing, more transportation options, reinvestment in existing neighborhoods, and inclusive growth for all people. It also means a future where there's safer and easier access to jobs and services, that we have more sustainable water and land use, more protection from drought and extreme heat, and engage communities with a sense of purpose. It also means that our jobs are higher-paying, that we have improved workforce education and training, our economy is more competitive and diversified, and that our neighborhoods are thriving and healthy. And so while we as a community have had some successes in these areas, there's still a lot more work to do. And so I'm going to share just a few examples of our work at the MPO, where we're working to make our communities fairer, smarter, and stronger. So first, I'll start with the Southern Nevada Strong East Side Plan. This plan will identify opportunities to implement both transform Clark County as well as Southern Nevada Strong strategies for investing in existing neighborhoods, creating better streets, and expanding access to destinations. So this summer, our, our team will be working with community members to bring together stakeholders and local residents to learn more about neighborhood challenges as well as opportunities to implement these goals. Then, working with community as well as county staff, we will be working to develop a prioritized project list aimed at improving the life of people in the east side. I want to clarify that this study will be complementary to the City of Las Vegas East Side Plan and will really focus on lands in the county section. This study is a much-needed step to advance prosperity for all in a neighborhood that's really been overburdened by housing costs, transportation costs, as well as extreme heat. So while the east side plan will really work to address extreme heat more at a subregional level, we are continuing to do our work in addressing extreme heat at the regional scale. The MPO's Urban Heat Island Map, which is shown here, reflects our hottest neighborhoods. That includes the east side, but also reaches far beyond. So Southern Nevada Strong, Southern Nevada, excuse me, is expected to continue to get hotter, making it increasingly more difficult for people using transit or walking to get to where they need to go. So to address this challenge, the MPO will lead the development of a Transportation Resiliency Improvement Plan. This was recently funded through the Protect Federal Grant. The plan will look at not just extreme heat, but how transportation and other community resources are affected by a variety of other climate-related dangers, such as fire, power outages, as well as flooding. It will identify both infrastructure as well as emergency management changes needed for people to continue to travel when these types of events occur. The plan will also result in a prioritized project list that can be used for capital improvement planning or for grant applications. So for example, for heat, this might include things like cooling centers and corridors, or a much-needed heat response plan to address better coordination and services that could be deployed during upcoming extreme heat events. The plan will also ensure that our visitors can continue to travel safely as our climate gets warmer. This is especially important for our local economy. And we at the MPO are continuing to increase our work in increasing integration between transportation and economic development. So since the Southern Nevada Strong Plan was adopted, we've seen many successes in creating and developing new economic activity centers. A few just flashed on your screen, including the Medical District, Downtown North Las Vegas, Boulder Highway, and Maryland Parkway. However, there was a recent report released by GOED. It was called the Southern Nevada Regional Industrial Study that indicates that our region continues to fall behind peer communities like Salt Lake, Phoenix, and Denver. These communities continue to have more diversified economies and are able to attract a more educated workforce. The plan also identified a gap in regional coordination between transportation and economic development, and we at the MPO are really working to start filling that role in a couple of ways. First, we're going to be providing technical assistance to regional partners, leading the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy update. We're also working on a regional grant strategy, which will focus on transportation in support of economic development as well as other catalytic projects. And additionally, just yesterday, we kicked off the development of an infill map that will identify underutilized and vacant land. This map was actually identified as a priority action in the Southern Nevada Strong Plan and will be used by local agencies, site selectors, and others to identify those opportunities where zone changes, infrastructure upgrades, and other actions could help to facilitate needed infill development. The project is going to be developed by a newly-formed Southern Nevada Strong Economic Development Working Group, which brings together over 25 private sector developers, housing providers, economic and planning professionals. The infill map will also serve as a strong foundation for the upcoming 2025 Regional Plan. So the current regional plan created a really bold vision, and implementation has been challenging. Most of our development continues to occur at the fringe, and about 5% of our future growth will occur in established neighborhoods. Additionally, we're facing a lot of new challenges that were, are just getting worse since the last 10, over the last 10 years. So the regional plan will allow us as a community to come together once again to identify the locations of homes, jobs, and public facilities that we'll need as our population continues to increase. Different ways that that growth could occur will be tested through scenario planning, a tool used to look at trade-offs. This will be, you'll be able to evaluate whether different growth scenarios result in more or lesser emissions, more or less infrastructure costs, and how those scenarios change housing affordability. Our hope is that this process will result in a new shared vision for growth and a parcel-based, actionable regional plan. So as the MPO Board, the decisions that you make, whether that's programming transportation dollars or in your role through Southern Nevada Strong of setting a new vision for growth, has long-lasting impacts on our community, our economy, as well as our environment. And at yesterday's infill meeting, one of the participants said something like, "Our community is really at a crossroads," and, and I really agree. It seems that we have important choices ahead in deciding how we want to grow, the community we want to be, and the legacy that we choose to leave behind. So through Southern Nevada Strong, we look forward to growing our future together for a fair, smarter, and stronger community for all. With that, I'm happy to take any questions or hear your thoughts on regional planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Any questions? Christian Segalor?
I just wanted to make a comment. I know playing in Las Vegas is an oxymoron, but you're, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and especially in East Las Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, thank you so very much. One of the focus areas for Southern Nevada Strong, of course, was downtown North Las Vegas, and I'm happy to see that, you know, there has been progress. Working with Southern Nevada Strong, I think we're able to attract a really good developer who is transforming our downtown, our downtown area. It's taken a lot longer than, than I would have liked, of course, but the one thing I found out about government before I, as I looked back in 2013, the one thing I found out is, we move at a snail space, but we, we sometimes, we do get this thing going. We're about to have, in the downtown area, are the first women's healthcare center that will actually have, that will actually have medical imaging. My auntie, may she rest in peace, who, she lived, well, where she lived was like almost right around the corner from here. When she needed to get any, any sort of medical imaging done, she had to go across town. You couldn't find it there in North Las Vegas, but now, that's going to be, you know, now there'll be the women of the, the mothers of the children that I used to teach at Rancho High School, and I'm still not out of my portable, can you believe that? 15 years in the same portable. I'm still not moved out of it yet. I really need to throw away a lot more stuff, but that's, I digress. But now, the mothers of the children that I used to teach will actually have access to things like medical imaging in their, in their neighborhood, so maybe they'll actually make it there and possibly save their lives. The heat index, of course, many of the neighborhoods in the, the senior part of North Las Vegas and of course, you know, of Las Vegas, they were built, of course, to different standards. For us, one thing that we've done, and I see a few guys here from the city of Las Vegas, we have a new, we actually hired a new forester to plant, I already forget how many thousands of trees, but it's a lot more than we have, to, of course, to combat this. I really appreciate the plan that we had, that we have had. Perhaps when we started this thing, you know, more than a decade ago, well over a decade ago, we had other ideas, and I'm hoping that we, as one gentleman did point out, that we can make this kind of like an active kind of document, something that it can, it can grow and change as our community changes. I did find one thing that is kind of, in the paper, I see that there's an estimation that eight years from now, we might run out of land to develop. we might run out of land to develop. But hold up a second here. We have lots of info opportunities. The possibility of us actually raising densities in already-built-out areas should not, should definitely be something that we explore. There is many parts that we would think are the urban core that actually have very low residential densities. And these are places where if we got a little bit creative and built up slightly higher density projects that are actually along the route to travel that RTC already services, we can go ahead and keep on building more and more urban sprawl. But all that's going to mean is that RTC is going to have its resources stretched even further and further to try to gain transportation in these areas. We'll have to build a more and more blacktop to get out there to these areas. As I get older, I never really understood how density was such a good thing. But I am now a proponent of increased densities closer in to developed areas. Maybe it's not something that everyone wants to have, but I think in the future, not everyone's going to be able to afford or even need to buy a McMansion and contribute to the urban sprawl. And I will continue to advocate for higher and higher densities. Maybe not people packed like sardines on top of each other, but definitely, you know, multi-generational, multi-income, you know, higher-density projects. And there's lots of opportunities coming up, you know. So I really hope that we take this into account and move that into the Southern Nevada Strong program. And with that, that was a lot. But I guess that's my editorial for today. Thank you so very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Councilman Shaw.
When this program started back in 2012, it was initially funded by a grant of about $5 million, I believe. This plan has served us very well. It's done incredible things for the valley. I would like to recommend that we look for another grant to expand, grow, and make this a working document for the future. So that would be my challenge to continue to do this.
Yeah, I would say amen to that. And thank you for your presentation and all your work. With regards to the infill, we'll be focused on existing raw land, vacant land, or also for redevelopment opportunities.
All of the above.
Great.
Yeah, so we'll be looking at that and also developing some guidelines around how underutilized land should be defined. It'll be countywide, and we're also looking at mosquito as well.
Great. Wonderful. Any other comments? Very good. Thank you much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Okay, the next item, we'd like to give a shout out to the City of Las Vegas' MORE team as well as Help of Southern Nevada under Clark County. We've been partnering with both organizations. First, with the MORE team, we hosted two events for the unhoused community at our Bonneville Transit Center in downtown Las Vegas. MORE, which stands for Multi-Agency Outreach Resource Engagement, helps connect those experiencing homelessness to community services such as housing, transportation, employment, and documentation. At these two events, the MORE team assisted nearly 75 individuals, providing 90 referrals depending on their needs. In addition, we've been having conversations with Help of Southern Nevada under Clark County about new initiatives that will benefit more of our communities' at-risk residents in other parts of the valley. The work of both partners is often life-saving as they serve, and we want to say thank you to both for all that they do. Switching areas, we want to provide an update on our transit ridership and what we've seen. Comparing year-over-year, this is the month of April of '23 to April of '24, you can see year-over-year that micro-transit service or RTC On Demand that serves West Henderson and the southwest part of the valley around southern highlands and mountains edge continues to show very positive increases in ridership. In fact, it nearly doubled over the year. At the same time, looking at our residential ridership on regular transit, we're up nearly 7.5% compared to April last year, reaching 87% of pre-pandemic ridership levels. That is contrasted at the same time with the strip ridership is down 16.4% as we compare the year-over-year. Likely, this is due to, I mean, the ridership is very sensitive to the conditions out there in the resort corridor, particularly related to construction, special events, and detours. They really challenge the consistency and reliability of our service out there. In fact, if we look at a little bit more detail over the past year, you can see the deuce ridership on the strip from January 2023 through April of 2024, and quite the variability. And as you might expect, you know, during the fall of 2023, particularly around the setup of the F1 race, there's a lot of impacts there. Then we went into, of course, we hosted the Super Bowl, which was fantastic, but, you know, everybody wanted to be in the same place at the same time. And I think it created some challenges for us on the transit side. So, you know, it's important to acknowledge that the strip ridership is, again, very sensitive to what's going on in the resort corridor and how that may affect our operations. And with that, that concludes the CEO report. I'd be happy to take any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swallow. Any other comments or questions? Councilman?
Unfortunately, I'm not on the tourism board here. How, maybe someone else can answer this, but how is Las Vegas doing? Are the conventions back anywhere close to pre-pandemic levels? And that's also something that would be affecting our ridership, correct? And how is the electric car tunnel thing coming along? Is that impacting us as well?
So I'll speak at a high level, just with what I've read. But it does seem like the convention visitorship is going up. I don't know if they've hit pre-pandemic levels, but they're certainly making a comeback there. As far as The Boring Company, it's my understanding that they do have extensions that they've been working on to the West Gate as well as to the Encore, and that there's also a site near UNLV that they're planning to begin construction on.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? All right, Mr. Swallow.
All right. The next item is to receive the NDOT Director's Report, and Deputy Director Mario Gomez is here to provide the update.
Great, Mr. Gomez.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on behalf of NDOT. So the first item I'd like to talk about is the Tropicana Design-Built Project at I-15. On this project, we continue working on Phase 3 of I-15 at Tropicana. What the current Phase 3 consists or entails, the work is setting foundations for the new south half of the Tropicana Avenue Bridge, rebuilding the southbound I-15 to eastbound Tropicana flyover, paving and bridge rehabilitation work in the I-15-215 interchange, which has required ramp restrictions and closures. I'm happy to report that the Tropicana interchange ramps are on schedule to reopen the fall of this year. However, there will be directional full closures, one northbound and one southbound on I-15 this summer because of the bridge work over the interstate highway. The project team is working on the schedule and project dates when the closures will actually take effect, based on the contractor's schedule or progress. We are working on a public information campaign and will work on the media, stakeholders, and our partners and neighboring states to alert drivers ahead of those closures. More information on the Tropicana Design-Built Project, there's two more phases remaining of construction, not including this current Phase 3. And then, work is still on track to be completed the fall or third quarter of year 2025. And we are all sort of looking forward to seeing the final product of this project, so. Next item I'd like to talk about is the I-11 feasibility study. So NDOT is making progress on the I-11 Cal Canyon to Mercury designation and future planned improvements. Our team has been gathering data on traffic patterns, safety concerns, and environmental consideration along this corridor. Using that and feedback received during the last public meeting, we've developed a draft menu of improvements, including interchange locations, access road modifications, improvements to upgrade US 95 to an interstate, solutions for traversing the Indian Springs area. And to share the proposals and gather more feedback, we're hosting a virtual public meeting from June 10th to July 12th. In addition, we will also be having an in-person public meeting on Tuesday, June 25th, at the Indian Springs Park Community Center. So we have preliminary traffic safety data for 2024 so far as provided by the Department of Public Safety. In 2024, we are seeing a 17% increase in the overall fatal crashes statewide compared to last year's around this time of year. The majority of those fatal crashes have occurred in Clark County. Speed and impairment remain the largest contributing factor from what we're seeing so far. Some key takeaways for the state, unrestrained fatal crashes are down 12%. Pedestrian fatal crashes are increased by, have increased by more than 26%. Fatal motorcycle crashes have increased by more than 72%, going from 18 fatalities in 2023 to 31 fatalities so far this year in 2024. Two main areas that we have been focusing on is intersection safety for vulnerable road users and passing lanes on rural two-lane highways. We also have a highly-active and engaged Nevada Advisory Committee on Traffic Safety, which brings together NDOT representatives, Department of Public Safety, Nevada DMV, together with state and local agencies to provide guidance on improving highway safety. So many of us are here today to continue, so many of us today continue to play an important role in traffic safety, including supporting and implementing our Strategic Highway Safety Plan strategies and other programs to improve safety in Nevada highways. The Speed Management Action Plan, which was developed to further help manage speed on Nevada roadways. These measures, coupled with local road safety plans, are aimed at saving lives in our roadways and reaching the goal of zero fatalities. Next item I'd like to talk about is our chip sealing and safety program, which is our preservation program this time of year. So NDOT crews are currently performing chip sealing here in Southern Nevada and statewide. As road fatalities rise across the state, we're reminding drivers to please be on the lookout for roadside crews. As we perform chip sealing, watch out for heavy machinery and construction crews along state routes and frontage roads, many of which are rural two-lane roads. Please reduce speed when you see work zone signs. Always stay alert and maintain safe distances from other drivers. Even in areas of long-term roadwork, it's important to look out for traffic lane changes and detour signs. We are asking everyone to work together with us to help protect the lives of those who are working diligently to improve our roads. We all want to get home to our families. Certainly, last but not least, I wanted to share another new face of NDOT that is actually here with us today, Mr. Joe Harrington. Joe was recently appointed as the NDOT Director of Communications and Government Affairs, and we are delighted to welcome him back to Northern Nevada, actually, from NDOT after working in Florida for several years. Prior to Florida, Joe held the position of Public Information Officer for the RTC of Washoe County, and he was a television journalist for 10 years. This is Joe's first in-person meeting in this part of the state, and he is available for any of your communication needs. Joe, if you would please rise, stand up, wave your hands, et cetera, for the team to recognize where you are, and I would appreciate it. And thank you, Joe, for making the time to join us here today. And we are happy to have you back at NDOT and welcome to sunny and bright Las Vegas. And thank you for your time, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Director Gomez. All right, Mayor Goodman.
Well, you've finally seen the light, Joe. There is no place like Nevada. And it's perfect to welcome you since this is your area. For over a decade, as you well know, we have been asking and pleading with California and Caltrans to widen the I-15 between State Line and Barstow. Having just returned from a meeting in Los Angeles and coming down the 15 on their side for 45 minutes, maybe an hour, 108-degree heat stopped for that length of time. And I thought of all those who maybe have health issues, their no phones, and I'm wondering if there's anything, at least if they are not going to go ahead and widen, that certainly NDOT maybe write the firmer letter with the governor's signature to do something. It is a dangerous area and certainly deadly at this time of year in the heat. But perhaps they could put up solar poles that would have phone access when there's an emergency. There's no shoulder, and so it would have to be helicopters coming in to taking somebody who really is impaired in one of those gridlock situations. I think enough's enough. Here's Bright Line being given $3 billion when the total cost is $12 billion. This is a much quicker fix, and they need to get on it. So I am asking NDOT once again to please show some muscle here. This is now becoming a really over-challenged area, and we need to be stronger with Caltrans in California. Please.
Thank you. Christian.
Yes, I just wanted to come in. And I think you're doing more as far as cleanups along the 95 and the freeways, but also urge you to work with us so we can coordinate our efforts so that, you know, we clean up a camp on one side of the fence, and then they jump on the other side of the fence. And if we're both there, we can work together. So thank you, but thank you for reaching out and helping us.
Very good. Councilman Bro.
Oh, no, actually, I really, for someone who actually goes out, done this summer, when I'm going out to scout places I want to hunt in the fall, I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing out in the rurals. It might sound like a silly question, but I see that, of course, the Mormon crickets are taking over several parts of rural Nevada. Well, when that happens, I definitely will be a much better person. I like going to church, but every time I go in, no matter what church it is, my hair catches on fire, so. But in all seriousness, though, does the Mormon cricket, that those invasions, and it's really thick in some places, does that affect what you're doing out there in repaving?
It does, actually. As a matter of fact, we have two projects slated for part of our preservation program this year up in Carson-Reno area. And one of those two projects had to be canceled because of what you just stated with the Mormon crickets. Removing them from our roadway is virtually impossible, and that creates, obviously, you know, an issue for us. So we're pausing all activities when they are there, and then we'll regroup and reschedule work for next year.
By the way, folks, if you've never been in a Mormon cricket invasion zone, right, it's unbelievable. And they're big, they're mean, and they're nasty. And they make a most disagreeable crunch. You know, that's it. I'll stop right there.
When you eat them or when you run them over?
No, no worse, you know, when you run them over. And then, the worst part is they're like totally cannibalistic. So if you step on one, or it draws a whole bunch of them to... It's kidding, and not nasty.
All right, off topic. All right. Anybody else, have any other comments or questions for Deputy Director Gomez? Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate you. David.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the agenda is to approve the Consent Agenda, which consists of items 5 through 59 and can be taken in one motion.
Very good. I'll obtain a motion.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to receive a presentation on certain matters. This is item 60, to receive a presentation on certain matters related to the July 1, 2024 increase in fuel taxes made under the provisions of Section 373.0633 of NRS and Chapter 4.07 of Clark County Code. Mr. Sherwin Gutierrez, Senior Director of Finance for the RTC, is here to give the presentation.
Thank you, David. Good morning, Chairman Jones, and members of the board. I'm here to provide a brief presentation on our Fuel Revenue Indexing Financial Updates. So for calendar year 2023, the Producer Price Index was minus 0.7% as shown on the blue line over the 23. The 10-year rolling average PPI is nearly 4% as shown on the green line over 23. FRI-1 had the 10 cents cap and was reached on July 1 of 2016. FRI extension rate per gallon of gas effective July 1 of 2024, it will be 13.1 cents or about 2.9 cents from fiscal year 2023. The revenue from FRI-1, we are projecting 86 million... The revenue from FRI 1, we are projecting 86 million for fiscal year 2024, and we're budgeting the same amount for fiscal year 2025. We are projecting FRI extension revenue for fiscal year 2024 at 58 million, and budgeting 74 million for fiscal year 2025, to factor in the rate increase from the previous slide. That concludes my prepared remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you. Sorry, Mayor Goodman.
What happens when it sunsets?
We just don't get an increase. That will be after, in fiscal year 2027.
And then, it just, but I thought it sunsets, and it's over, and there is no income then at that point.
We're still gonna get the income, Mayor. It's just, the revenue will still be there, it's just not gonna, we're not just gonna get the increase similar to this one.
Oh, okay, so it does continue, even though the governor did not approve it?
Yes.
And did not renew the sunset.
Mayor Goodman, if I could, the, so it will stop increasing after the end of 2026 if it's not approved by the voters. We do currently have the ability to go to a ballot measure in 2026, and with voter approval, it could be extended. That being said, it's important to note, fuel revenue indexing is so important because it addresses the inflation, and as we've seen, especially in the last couple of years, that inflation really has a big impact on our ability to fund projects. And so without that continued increase, we are just losing the purchasing power that we have available.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Yep, Councilman Shaw.
You know, I know that we don't derive any revenue from the indexing of aviation fuel, but it would seem to me that we have a number of Grand Canyon tours and helicopter tours that are all local, and it would seem fair that we ought to get some kind of indexing off the local avgas program.
Yeah, I, we were, previously, we were able to receive a certain portion of the jet aviation fuel tax, but the, it's my understanding the Federal Aviation Administration precluded that. Once they found out that was happening, they said, no, those funds have to be used for aviation-related facilities, not for roadways.
Okay. They sure use our roads to get there, though.
Fair enough.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll turn it back over to you, David.
Okay, item number 61 is our standing legal item, and there are no matters to bring before the board at this time, so we will move on to the next item, which is the, item 62 is the final citizens' participation.
Very good. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regard to any matters for the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward to the microphone, state your names, spell your last name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello again, Cyrus Hujadi. I represent Strong Towns. We have a local chapter here that has chapters all across the continent. We are mainly focused on reforming urban planning, bringing a more traditional approach, which is the main problem living here in Clark County. You have a very car-dependent area, perhaps the most in the country. And the worst part is, the housing is very close together, or there's many multifamily homes, but despite that, people still have to rely on cars. We hope to remove parking mandates, as they're still dominant, and we hope to reform and advocate to stop building arterial collector routes, also known as strods. These are highly inefficient, typically go 45 miles an hour, six to eight lanes, they divide neighborhoods, they're very dangerous, they fail to function as a highway and a street. And I just called and found out that Hollywood Boulevard Extension is getting plenty of subsidies, and this is where a lot of our tax funds are actually going. In addition, I've commented a while back ago about the construction, it's just getting out of hand, and when you distribute the traffic every half a mile and a mile, that means when one route is gridlocked because of construction, the arterial system makes it very dysfunctional, as opposed to the traditional system that you have in downtown. Very frustrating. And I've actually spoken to Seeking Orange. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, I am a huge advocate of personal rapid transit. I first talked about it to an RTC official back in 2016. Vegas Loop is a step forward, although there's a possibility that we can upgrade it. Personal rapid transit basically works in a metal strip, it's on-demand in pods, you don't have to wait for the pods, you don't have to wait for other passengers to get in and out. Although they cannot replace all cars and all trains, they cost 1/10th to build per mile compared to light rail. And believe it or not, you ask yourself, where is this actually being built? Look at San Jose, they're planning personal rapid transit in partnership with GlideWay, is a company to build a system from their airport to downtown and possibly around, possibly many locations across the Bay Area. As you know, we're gonna see how they're gonna go through the process, and hopefully we can be the next destination that will implement this project. But more importantly, we have to look at building such systems on the outskirts development, because as we've seen from Southern Nevada Strong, the outskirts have to experience some alternatives to work with the inward as well, so we can build these systems on the outskirts so that people have alternative ways to get around besides a car. Other than that, thank you so much, I appreciate it, and look forward in future meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Hujadi. Next speaker? Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Ms. Jones?
Thank you very much. My name is Shelley Jones, J-O-N-E-S, and I want to brag about Silver Star. I love that program. It gets me here on time, it gets me to my destinations, and I just want to thank you guys very much because that's very important, especially for disabled people. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.